They're crazy down here.
Plus by the time you get to May, the northerners have mostly left for a long time. You're back to just the old people.
Where's Adam?
And where's Tom?
They're still breaking.
Okay, we're on Zoom, right?
We are on Zoom.
Okay, since we're back in open session, it's been. We started the meeting that we're writing on public, then we had the public hearing that we went into public. We did do one piece of business in public, but we weren't connected to Zoom. Is anybody on this one?
No.
Oh, okay. But we're recording it, right? So we did vote when we went back into public. To proceed with the sale of a half acre land, piece of land to Carol and Pam Levine.
Yes.
And that motion was um made by myself, Eric seconded it, and it was a roll call vote unanimously.
Yes.
Okay, let's proceed. We did sign checks to me and reviewed um bank statements and reconciliations.
Uh, the rec- the.
Reconcile.
The bank statement reconciliation from March and then the transaction report for March as well as first quarter. Those were done off Zoom.
Yep.
And Adam still has a couple other items if we want to address those before we continue with our regular agenda.
Sure.
I had a question about the transfer station, a couple.
Come on up.
Uh. Casella is no longer accepting mattresses on the demo like we've always done. So now we gotta find another way to get rid of these mattresses and to wear. I know Casella does take them, but isn't it like twenty dollars or more just depending on the mattress, per mattress? And then we gotta pay to haul it. So I don't know.
I think we need to inquire with Casella, because they should be taking them.
I thought they said they were gonna take them.
Yes, they did.
They're pulling them off the demo now. We used to always put it on top of the demo and then they cover it, take it, be gone. Well, now they're ripping them off.
They can't go in the landfill.
And now it's all new.
But I thought they said they would take, because originally they wanted to charge us like, I can't remember now, I don't have the paperwork.
They're charging us nineteen dollars per unit.
Per mattress.
Per mattress.
But I was gonna bring that up tonight, that we gotta go up on that price to make sure that we get covered, you know, with a.
Or we just end up with them all over the road.
I was gonna say, the only thing with that, I thought about it, if we raise the price up more, we're probably gonna end up with a lot more than everyone else is paying for, because they're gonna throw them out on the side of the road. It's one of those things. What do you do?
What is, what do we charge for mattresses?
Not enough, but I think it's like eight bucks.
Anywhere from eight to, I think, twelve, depending on the size.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Casella, when you, we agreed to it, would be nineteen dollars a mattress, and they said they would take them and transport them, right? I'm trying to remember.
Yes.
Okay, but now. They're just not taking them?
Not on the demo like it used to.
Can they take them on the other truck?
They, we, they would have to hire them to come with a separate rig for that.
Let me. They told us that they would just take it off at the landfill.
That's how it's been, but they took them off and threw them off, the demo, and took the demo.
So do they have another new driver? Is that it, or? So we need to probably reach out to Casella.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Jeanette?
I'll email Mark.
Okay.
Because we were, on the last invoice, they were charging us forty-five dollars per mattress. And I saw that and I contacted Mark and said, this isn't right. So.
So did they reduce it?
Um, I just got an invoice in the mail today that I have not looked at yet.
Because we get a lot of mattresses for a small town.
Okay. So the issue right now, I mean, it is cost, but also the transporting them.
Right, if they're not gonna take them on the demo now, we gotta find a way to either get it to them or they, we hire them to come pick them up.
Because they were just.
If they're no longer.
Right, because do we put the demo into a dumpster?
Yep.
And then they just pick that up with their truck?
Correct.
But they were physically before putting the mattresses on for us?
No, we put them on.
Oh, okay.
We always put the mattresses on the top of the demo when it was ready to go.
To go.
We cap it with that, so it was easy for them to tarp it.
Yeah.
And they didn't have nothing poking in their tarp.
Right.
And it helped us get rid of them. It's always worked and now, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So you'll check with Casella and see what's going on. Because I understood that they were gonna handle them when they got to the transfer station, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, as long as it wasn't a dumpster full of them.
And that, it's never.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it's across the board though, because even uh, Crabberry wasn't gonna do it, take a beat up. Because she said that, well, we'd sneak one once in a while, but.
We've always done that, Crabberry.
I know, but they, when I talked to her, she said that's gonna stop.
Okay.
She said as long as we weren't sending uh, like twelve mattresses at once, it was fine, but what we were, or as long as we weren't sending like a dozen mattresses at a time, then they would have to charge a special. But she said the way we were doing it with a couple on top of the dumpster was fine.
Yeah, because that's all, you can only put one row, and most of them are queens, so you can only fit four.
Yeah. She didn't have a problem with the way we were doing it.
Right. No, it's always worked great. Now all of a sudden, it's like, uh, what's going on here?
Yeah, because I saw the mattresses out, I was there a week ago, and it was raining, and I asked Kyle, because they weren't undercover or anything.
Yeah, they're supposed to be covered with tarts.
Yeah, they weren't, they were just out there. Okay.
And the other thing with the transfer station, with Littleton, where we bring our Gaylords, with the recyclables, they're gonna have to start charging us. Because it's costing them now, so I didn't know if we, if we can make a deal with them where we trade them some of our aluminum cans to offset, so we're not paying it out of pocket cash, or our batteries, however we come up with that.
What are they wanting to charge us for?
The recyclables.
Are, were they planning on notifying us formally?
Well, yeah.
Because I've not received anything, and I spoke with the gentleman who handles their transfer station two, three weeks ago.
Yeah, this is just the last time Kyle brought them, would been last Wednesday.
They wanna charge for the recyclables?
Because it's costing them supposedly. Kyle knows more about it, of how it actually went down, but yeah.
So I think we need to know how much you're gonna charge. And then the thing that was hard when I was trying to look at usage was knowing like how, how much we actually produce of recyclables. So the impact.
But yeah, supposedly it, you're gonna get to that point, so.
They were supposed to start weighing our Gaylords when we were bringing them, that was, they were supposed to start doing that last year, and they did not.
They haven't.
Okay.
So I was going to look into seeing if there was a grant available for us to get a scale where we could weigh them ourselves, because we're supposed to be reporting that.
Okay. And then I, I know I see the metal, the new metal place on one sixteen. We talked at some, one point about checking to see whether they would give us more for metals than we're getting. I don't know where that is. We ever did that?
No.
Okay. I think.
I'm gonna check with Lancaster to see if they, and what, if we can work up a deal with them.
If you can get us back in there, because we used to when they kicked us out of there, and that's why we're back with Littleton.
Yeah, that's quite a while, we got a new guy, and he's doing a pretty good job of uh.
Because they always weighed in Lancaster.
Right.
We always got a sheet of the weight of every.
So if we could go back to Lancaster, that might be good.
Yeah.
Check with that. Why did we get kicked out of Lancaster?
I can't remember.
I'll step up the plate to check that one out. I'll check with them and bring it to the board next.
Because we were with Littleton, and then Littleton, for some reason, parted ways with us, so we ended up in Lancaster, and then we went from Lancaster back to Littleton. It's been just these two.
Okay.
And exactly why or how, I don't know. At that time, I weren't in a position to know. I was just an employee, bring it here or there.
So this is a good opportunity to, to check on this, so.
But from what Kyle said, when he brought the last load, that they were possibly gonna have to start charging us for the recyclables.
Well, you said something about giving them our, giving them our aluminum. Don't we give them our aluminum cans already?
No.
What happens to our?
We stack them up, and when we get enough, we bring them to a recyclable place and cash it in, the town gets the money.
I've never seen any money from cashing in aluminum cans.
Had to since I've been in the job.
Oh.
It takes a long time to stock up a decent amount of aluminum cans to bring it anywhere.
So where?
And before, I think it was in Lancaster, they had a deal where they give them some of the Gaylords of aluminum cans and did a swap out there for taking our stuff.
Where are all the aluminum?
Underneath the trailer right now.
In the trailer?
Underneath the trailer, because there's really no storage.
So we talked about.
Mattresses are outside, everything. We don't have enough storage there. That's why I put a pad in beside the building, cutting the axles and setting that trailer down and building a roof over it, and you'd have that whole center aisle for storage. And the trailer would be safer to access.
We've got money in the capital reserve fund for the transfer station for work to be done.
But yeah, to do that, we're, it's storage.
And we talked about that last year, but then I think everything away the blood, so.
It did.
Because you wanted to cut the legs off of that.
Do a concrete pad, set it down, and then you would have that whole center like you do now. But by doing that, you tie in over the trailer, and now you have that whole center bay of storage.
So is it better, because it seems to be like putting in a concrete pad might be a big expense.
Not really.
No? Okay.
But you'd more.
That'd be better and more permanent than a third trailer, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, because you're not renting it, you own it.
Right.
It's part of the building, just adding on to it to make more room.
And was it Lambert that we're going to check with about cutting the legs off?
Yeah, cutting them off and setting the trailer down.
Okay. So do we want to proceed with that? Okay, do we need a quote for the pad? I don't have no idea how much a concrete.
We'd have to get a concrete company to.
No idea. If you uh, if I can go measure it out, then I can call them. I, the last I knew was like a hundred fifty, four hundred sixty-four dollars a yard.
Is it?
Yeah, and so.
Okay.
Uh.
So if you could do that, then I think if Jeanette would check with Lancaster, then she'll have, you know, information comparable to what she gets from Littleton, if she checks with both of those on the recyclables.
Well, Littleton hasn't given us anything, and Tom was gonna check with Lancaster.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if, if, if you reached out, then we have, make sure we have consistent information with also.
That's fine, I can.
Is that all right?
So you're saying that's what you want me to do? Okay, I thought you were recapping something, I'm like, no.
No, that, that's what I'm proposing, but.
Okay.
You know, I know you're busy with the female stuff too, so if that doesn't.
No, it's fine. It's just another couple phone calls.
And then you can check on the concrete?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're ready, Tom, I can go over with you.
Yeah.
We can measure it.
Yeah, true. Yeah, I'll uh, I'll get, I'll call you on it that way.
Yep.
If you're available, we'll do it.
Yep.
Okay, and then.
But yeah, it's storage is the biggest thing over there.
Yeah.
Can you contact Lambert to cut the legs off, or do you want to wait until the concrete's done?
Well, you're gonna have to wait until a concrete, because we're gonna have to pull the trailer out of the way and tuck it off to the side, get the pad done, and then set the trailer.
And then do the roof.
And then you throw trusses in and metal it, cap the backside, and you got that whole length of the, the transfer station now, it's a pretty big cube of storage.
Okay.
Because that's why we're going every other week, or every three weeks, depending on how much we get, because you run out of storage.
Okay.
With your regular Gaylord, your plastics, all your recyclables, your paper, mixed paper.
Yep.
That's why all the Gaylords of the aluminum cans are underneath the trailer.
Okay.
And Kyle was gonna bring them to the guy and headed to Littleton, the scrap place to cash them in. And then they'll send a check, normally how that works. To the town.
I've never, since I've been here, I've never seen a check come.
It takes forever to accumulate the cans.
Because when I was looking through things back, you know, a year or so, I saw no revenue from aluminum. You know, we get metal revenue.
It takes a long time to fill them Gaylords with aluminum cans.
Yeah. Okay.
Then you're gonna make a load worthwhile, because they don't weigh nothing.
Right, yeah.
But, you know.
Does Littleton take metals?
We, we have all metals, they pick it up.
Okay. So the only thing we could really trade with Littleton would be the aluminum can.
And batteries.
And batteries.
If that's what it came down to.
I mean, right now, are we paying for disposable batteries?
I don't know.
Okay.
I could.
I think we get paid. Yeah, I think we get a couple dollars apiece, if we were to buy, someone stole them all last year. So they.
Oh, that's right.
Wendled down to nothing, and it takes a while to make a pallet.
Yeah, that's what I.
Of batteries.
Don't remember seeing anything, okay.
Yeah, someone was sneaking between the gate with a dolly and robbed the whole pallet.
Is that the same guy who was dumpster diving?
I would believe, but I don't know. I can't say for sure, but yeah.
You can say the thing.
Yep.
Good gig, giving it the proof.
Right.
Yep. Okay.
But, yeah.
Even the state, please stay over and.
Right.
I know, yep. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. It's just on there.
Lawn care.
Oh, I'm the lawn care?
Lawn care quotes, so I have four. I just want, you used to do lawn care commercially.
Oh, okay.
So I just want you to look at it.
Okay.
And tell what you think.
Yep.
This is for the mower?
Yes.
And weed mower too?
Um, it depends. Some places don't do, some places don't do the smaller handheld stuff, other places do, like like Bear, I think you're looking at Bear right now.
I am.
So they only do mowers, so they gave us a price for a lower grade commercial mower. Um, a scag, which is what Adam recommended, and then a, a finish cut push mower. And then um, this is a this is a low grade commercial, high grade residential, he said it would definitely work for what we need.
Right. But that's why when you were talking about getting into it, I was saying you definitely don't want a homeowner's for what you're doing, you'll burn it up and destroy it.
Right.
In no time, so by doing this, it's the right way.
Yeah, so those are, those are scag.
Yep.
What's he got for price on the scag?
Uh, the first one's a twenty twenty-three scag power equipment, uh, SPZ.
It's not twenty-three, it's, it's, they're all twenty-five models.
Oh, okay.
Just that's.
Okay.
The spec sheet I found.
But yeah, it's a sixty-one inch and uh, nine thousand five hundred and fourteen.
Nope, eighty-one ninety-five is the physical price.
I'll settle.
Well, I, this isn't even, this isn't even from his website.
I didn't even see that.
He doesn't even have a website.
But even better, even better.
Eighty-one ninety-five.
Yeah.
And then he had a, he had, he had another one, which was a sixty-one inch Vanguard, thirty-six horsepower for twelve thousand.
That's a big motor, that's a good motor.
So the, the one for eighty-one ninety-five is a twenty-seven horsepower.
Yep.
That's plenty.
Yeah, as long as you don't go below that.
Might as well on that, and you can't stop that.
They basically say like the twenty-seven horsepower will do like four, I think it was four, I said four and a half acres an hour.
No, yeah, well, a lot of the other mowers, uh, Husqvarna and all them, they're only like twenty-four and a half horse, and you're burning motors up.
Can I see those? I'll, I'll kind of tell them to.
And the, the other one, the one for twelve thousand was how many horsepower?
Thirty-six.
Yep.
But you're saying twenty-seven is plenty?
Yes.
That's what I was getting.
Yes.
So then Karen Building in Berlin, they had a Stihl five sixty, which is twenty-seven horsepower, sixty-inch cutting deck for eighty-seven hundred.
What's the brand name on those?
Stihl, S-T-I-H-L. Steel, still, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
And they also gave us prices on a trimmer. Same brand for three forty. Um, a blower, backpack blower for five hundred. And then the push mower for nine eighty.
Steel must be pretty recent, because they don't, they never used to make a mower, like three years back. Three, four years ago, not a riding mower. This is gonna be fairly recent that they've been making them.
Riggs and Stratton engine. And then I looked, I was looking for that, the specs for that mower, and that's what made me go to go online and I ended up going over to Nolte's Power Sports in Littleton, who is over a thousand dollars more for a mower that is not, is not as beefy.
Right.
It's a twenty-four horsepower, not a twenty-seven, so.
Yeah.
He also quoted a Husqvarna, which was fifteen thousand. They were somewhat competitively priced on their handheld items, but and then um, John Parks gave me pricing on the Gravelys.
Yeah.
It's only a twenty-four horsepower. Sixty-inch cutting deck for sixty-five hundred, which is residential. Uh, they jump up to their commercial. It's um, thirteen six fifty. And then a higher end commercial, full commercial is fifteen one sixty-eight.
Yeah.
There's the quotes and specs that I could find on each one. So I had kind of looked at them and looked at the horsepower, the cutting deck, the different options, you know, the different specs, and I kind of put them in order in the lower right hand, lower right hand corner of uh, each package there.
Well, I was gonna say, this one right here is the one I'd buy, is a scag.
And he's local.
Right.
He's right in Lancaster.
John is too, but I own a Gravely, and I've mowed with a lot of them, and I've had nothing but problems, nonstop.
They don't hold the hill either.
No. I, I, I own one, and I wouldn't buy one again.
It's solid.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are rugged.
Yeah, they are.
They're a good mower. They'll hold up and then some.
I think if we went with the, the eighty-one ninety-five, then you can go out and get your blower and whatnot.
Can I have that package though?
Yep.
Yeah, he had the push mower. Um, he gave us a, a seven horsepower finish cut push mower for seventeen hundred, but I, I think that's a lot of money for a push mower.
Yeah, you can get them through Home Depot.
Yes.
And then drummers.
Well, so when I was there, I, I had walked, he had some units in the front, and I said, were those used units in the front? He said, no, they're new. I'm like, well, what about this one, and what about that one? And he goes, oh, yeah, those would work. So I'm like, hmm. That's how the eighty-one ninety-five ended up on here.
Gotcha.
And then there's a Mastport twenty-one inch steel deck, self-propelled for five fifty-four. So.
Yeah.
And then we would just have to get the blower and the trimmer from someone else, but they seem pretty competitively priced on those.
On those.
Uh, Nolte actually had the best price on those, but, you know, whatever. And then I did reach out to try and find a trailer. I guess the trailer that we have is an open trailer, and it's how long?
It's too big. You ain't getting a tra- a mower on that Safeway.
So I did look online and found a twelve, a twelve by seven.
Being enclosed, right?
Enclosed for like sixty-two hundred dollars.
And that's stored for the one or two.
Right.
You have storage for it too, if you're gonna do that.
And it's got a ramp for getting them in.
Yeah, the door, the back door, when you open, that's the ramp.
Yeah.
Yep. On the enclosed. I think that's seven foot long by twelve wide, or is it the, or twelve long?
Seven wide.
I got it backwards. Let me think about that.
Play a sixty-five hundred on that.
Roughly, yeah. Uh, Mike actually was looking, trailers are his specialty, so he was looking at a bunch of different ones and sent them to me, so.
But the scag is, I recommend, that when mine dies and I gotta buy one, I'd be buying a scag.
So we'd go with the sixty-one inch deck and the twenty-seven horsepower, three thousand twenty-five?
That's your best one out of the group, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
X, X mark used to be good, but they've gone downhill big time, and they're overpriced. Scags are tough mower, they're rugged.
And then the push mower for about five fifty-four.
There's something like.
And then.
And then if you add on the trimmer and the blower, you're looking at ninety-seven ten for the mower stuff, and then a trailer.
And the trailer sixty-five hundred?
Uh, that's what I had found. So you're looking at sixteen thousand dollars. But you're looking at having the equipment to do it going forward then.
For more than one, it's a, for more than money this year.
Yes.
Pay out over other years.
This one and uh, we ain't got no small trailers uh.
Not around the shop, we only have the big trailer. That's the only thing.
Would be worth uh, checking and see if we could find a, a secondhand one that's on the most.
I was gonna recommend a secondhand.
It could certainly look, yeah.
Closed.
Just, you're, you're starting to run out of time, just because of all the rain that we've had, the grass is growing very fast, and Memorial Day is three weeks away.
Yep.
So we've gotta get, at least get the cemeteries done.
Yeah.
Because uh, don't, don't people trade in, they're old ones.
Yeah, yep. Oh yeah, you can find nice used trailers cheap.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you can.
But time to.
You, 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 it has to be enclosed, is that what you're?
Doesn't have to be, but then now you gotta find a place to store them. With an enclosed, you can clean them and prep them and get them ready and put them away. It's stored out of the way. Because I was thinking open trailer too, and then when they're like, yeah, then I get it, makes sense.
Yeah.
Because I'm not storing them in the garage, I don't have room for them. I don't.
Well, I mean, I don't know the way to look, I mean, other than on the marketplace.
Well, I can look, I just need to.
Soon.
I need to know how much you guys want to spend. I don't have a problem looking, continuing to look.
Well, I think we should go with the, the scag and the push mower and just try to find the best deal for the, the blower and the trimmer. And I would say, if you can find a used trailer, that would be perfect, but if not, we need to move forward with this, so. And did we set a threshold when we approved this? I don't remember.
We didn't.
Okay. But I think we can move forward.
Ryan.
Yeah.
Not putting you on the spot, but doing this, is this worth doing? Because I, if I remember right, we've been down this road and it didn't work.
What happened to it? What happened before in the past was the town crew can't do it.
Right.
So, you know, I'm opening my mouth, me and him, but, you know, we're willing to.
Yep.
Willing to do it. Willing to do it, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Cause I do know the cemeteries and I do know, we're already gonna start getting hammered on the phone because they're gonna say that it's not being mowed.
Right.
This and that. And we got a lot of ruts that need to be fixed and, and. Pushmen.
Oh, yeah.
So we gotta fix them. We're already hearing about it. It's.
Oh, I'm sure.
Bring it back to you guys, but it comes through us.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So. They're already complaining about the grass, so.
I'm sure.
Yeah, it's just one of those.
They cleaning up that fence line yet?
They're cleaning up that whole property, uh, they haven't done the fence line yet, but.
What do you mean what fence?
Long cemetery, yeah.
That property that's.
The handling property.
They didn't fire the trees where they got, no, they got tires and stuff still stuck in the trees.
So we talked about building a fence, didn't we?
We talked about putting a solid fence up across there just so we can't see it. They're cleaning up and there's not many cars in the mow, right? But.
About a wall.
Once the cars are gone, there's still piles of.
Right.
Yeah.
She wants to sell.
Well, then I need to call her.
Right.
Yeah, is it too late now to?
Never too.
They got a whole.
They didn't start.
That they pushed down and proved the cemetery to get it down in there that.
That's theirs?
Yeah. I'm not even sure if it's on their property. I really don't know. But. Yeah, they, there's a bunch of junk. I think what they're gonna do, honestly, I think they're just gonna end up. Not paying taxes or whatever. I think the town's gonna end up, I really.
I've already spoken to her.
How do you think that?
She's, she's made, she's made payments. So I would think if they were, that was their plan, that they probably wouldn't make payments, but.
Right.
I'll call her tomorrow.
Cause we haven't started the work on Smith Road, so we could still.
I'll call her tomorrow.
But I figured I'd ask, cause I knew you would know better about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just know if I'm gonna find the trailer, I finding a used one is fine. But.
As long as it ain't a problem, something else is.
I, I just looked online and I could find tons of them down south.
But you don't know what you're getting.
Right.
Well, and six, about sixteen thousand dollars is what we were gonna pay to have them do the spring cleanup and the lawn care for the summer.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what we're having now with all that.
Right, with all of it.
I mean, that doesn't cover the labor that.
Right.
You know, we're gonna use, but.
This year, yeah.
Yeah. And it, and you can.
Self anyway.
It will.
Essentially is.
And you could make sure that whoever's doing it knows to be careful with the cemeteries and.
Brian knows what he's doing.
Yep.
And Mike.
And Mike.
I'm just thinking, you know, if we had Owen or somebody doing it, they'd need to be told to be careful.
Terry said Brian hasn't cut too many of her plants off yet, so.
Well, that's good.
I threatened.
Okay, so I think, I mean, we authorized this before and I think we can, I don't think we need a motion or anything. We're just confirming that. Just races are in line and go move forward.
Okay, so what about the trailer?
Did you check?
Move forward.
I'm sorry?
Did you check down the twin?
I have not.
Hey, he's usually pretty good.
Price wise, yeah.
In there, good trailer.
Yeah.
Who is it?
Garnell, John.
Yeah, Garnell's.
You know, I bought a trailer, I've, I've got one and it's a good trailer.
And he's in twin?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'll check.
Yeah, if you go through the white.
Yeah.
Go towards the DMV.
There on the left.
They're like between.
There's snow machine trailer place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they do snowmobiling out of there, right? By the gas station?
Yep.
Okay.
That is in the gas station.
Yep, I will.
Yeah.
I will check them out. See if I can get a.
Another, did you check the one down in Tilton, the trail place down there?
The one we got.
Cause they're usually good price wise too.
The one we got for the fire station. Me and my son went down that way to get it. That, that was a good trailer.
Cause usually they do a pretty good pricing down there too, and they're good trailers. You can buy just about anything. I know it's a little bit of a drive, but.
Forget where. It's somewhere around Tilton, the one that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, there's only. Yep, I know right where it is.
He's been looking all weekend.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
That's your thing.
Yeah.
Yes. So is it, am I good to get a trailer as well? And we're looking at about sixteen thousand-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Not for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then moving on, we have, we've already signed checks.
Uh, yeah, well, thank you, Adam.
Yep.
Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we've got other stuff to sign.
Okay. Full night tonight.
Yes. It's already eight o'clock.
I know.
Cemetery deed?
Okay. We need a motion for this, right? We usually do a motion.
I think so.
I made a motion that we, um, sign the cemetery deed.
That's the ones that we talked about last, last year, last time.
It's a new cemetery deed.
I second it.
I already did.
All right, he did.
Okay, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
First property tax warrant for twenty twenty-five.
Usually, uh, what you're gonna be collecting for taxes?
Yes.
Whether, yeah.
Those will be the tax bills that I print tomorrow.
We're in good shape in terms of timing.
Very good shape, yeah. Because the earliest we can collect the first tax payment by state statute is July first.
Okay.
So, I mean. If we did thirty days, we would be two weeks ahead of that schedule.
And do we have another option for distribution of? Tax bills?
Yep, so, um.
That's new business, but.
Since we're talking about taxes.
Yeah.
Um. Yes, based on. RSA seventy-six eleven, it allows us to electronically deliver tax bills. To any resident who requests it in writing. I had a short meeting with Invoice Cloud, who does our online invoices for dogs and auto. Registrations, any DMV registrations. And, um, they could do that for us. I didn't, I just was speaking with the marketing people. I don't know if there is an associated additional cost for that. Um, but they also will provide marketing information that we could send out to residents. Where they could like scan a QR code or something like that and go into the system and sign up. On their own, where they're not then sending me their information where I have to put it in and. So on and so forth, so, um, I'm, she told me that she would get me, um. In touch with the salesperson to find out more about that, but.
Cause would we need to send a notice out with these tax bills is what I'm wondering.
Um, we could. These tax bills don't technically have to be mailed for another couple of weeks. Another week and a half, maybe. Um.
Cause if we do another mailing, that's a big expense.
Right. Yeah, it just.
Yeah, cause we're thirty, what, eight hundred dollars on postage for tax bill mailings or?
Uh, I have a one thousand fifty-six tax bills. Some of them. Go to the same owner, so at seventy-four cents a piece, yeah, it's. I mean, I'm spending at least eight hundred plus envelope plus tax bill paper. So.
Paul. Is, is there a way to, uh, attach to the pantry task, tax kiosk? Because it's already there, like I pay my taxes electronically already.
You can't, so you can go online and see your tax bill on the kiosk?
Right.
But.
And pay it.
Yes, you can see it and pay it, but it doesn't send you the tax bill.
No, that's why I'm asking, is there a way that we can tie in with them somehow?
It's a different, receiving that payment is a different, yeah, receiving that payment is a different system. I don't believe that that system would actually send a tax bill and by state statute, I'm required to send it. Yeah.
I was trying to really get at is, there's a way to make a payment already.
Yes.
Because like. My tax bill gets sent to the kiosk and to me.
Yeah, I upload.
Even though it gets paid through the kiosk by my mortgage company.
All of that gets uploaded to the tax kiosk by me once I generate them and, and update the kiosk.
We just have to figure out how to get the bill out to everybody without paying eight hundred dollars in postage.
Correct.
Yeah.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Yeah.
Hmm, because like dog licenses are sent electronically now.
That's through invoice.
Through invoice cloud.
Yep, anyone who has an email in their, in their owner profile, get stuff via email. Now, I've had people call me and say, I don't want it via email, cause there's too many scams out there. I'll come in and pay it. Okay, fine.
Right, but this way people have the option.
Yes, and the, and it's an opt-in, not an opt-out. So.
And it just seems like.
Tax kiosk, opt-in or an option.
Yeah.
But I still have to send the bill.
Yeah, it just seems that there's going to be marketing material about it.
Yep.
Can we, I mean, cause I know we're restricted to what we can include with the tax bills.
That I could send, yes.
So.
Because it's regarding taxes.
And I'm thinking if it's a. Waiting a week or two to send the tax bills out? And not having to do a separate mailing or not having to wait.
Yeah, I don't wanna do a separate mailing.
Or not, or then we'd have to wait until fall.
Right.
Where I'd rather have the option to get people on the system.
If it had to be a separate mailing based on their timeline of them, because they han- they would handle doing that card or information.
Yeah.
Then I would ask them to do a direct mail something or other.
Yeah.
And cover that cost. I, I don't, I'm not interested in doing a second mail.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. I make a motion that we sign the property tax warrant for the first. Um, property tax warrant of twenty twenty-five. Until that's separate from the. Mailing. Cause then I wanna make a motion that we look into including information with this, so that people can receive their tax bills electronically in the future.
Which. Uh, you, you don't need to make a motion to include that information in the tax bill.
Cause you're a tax collector.
Cause I'm the tax collector, I can do it, but you would need to make a motion. And have an approval from the board to electronically send tax bills. That's, that's what the state statute states is that the governing body must approve that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then right now, we'll do the tax warrant first, so we have a motion to approve the tax warrant. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we allow people to receive their tax bills electronically if they so desire.
That they don't have to.
Correct.
Correct, it's an opt-in.
All right.
Correct, not an opt-out, yeah.
Yeah. So do we have a second? All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
And the, and they're very specific in the statute, it says that the. Tax collector may issue bills or notices by electronic means only after the taxpayer requests such delivery. There shall be no charge for delivery of bills or notices by electronic means. And there shall be no penalty for not choosing to elect delivery by electronic means. Any request for electronic delivery of tax bills or notices shall contain the physical signature of the taxpayer. Or an electronic signature conforming to the requirements of the Federal Electronic Signatures Act or its successor. So they're pretty specific.
Yep. Okay.
So that was motioned and voted on?
Yes. Two, two separate, um, I motioned, dear executive, both of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
What was that RSA on that?
Seventy-six eleven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, we have minutes?
Oh, we have more. The MS five thirty-five?
Okay. And we received that by email. I make a motion that we prove and sign the MS five thirty-five.
I really like, uh.
We have a second?
A little more.
We have, I mean, we.
This was to get it, this was due. Already. Is there something that you guys have questions on specifically?
No, you just wanna look at it, look it over again.
Okay.
Um, but we shouldn't wait another two weeks to submit it. Cause I'm trying to remember the deadline on this, I know.
It was April first.
Yeah. Tom, are you comfortable with it?
No, because I, I didn't agree with the, uh, with the budget and everything, so that, and I'm not comfortable with that.
So not agreeing with the budget has nothing to do with. You know, the budget was approved by the town.
By the town, yes.
So whether you agree with it or not, it was approved by the voters. And this is the report that the auditor worked with, so it has the appropriation. And it has actual expenditures that are tied out. Um. Some of the things are categorized a little, little bit differently than what they were in the town report. Like on revenue, property tax doesn't show up on revenue, it shows up in a different report, so there's some differences. And some things were recategorized, but I mean, I looked through it with quite a bit of detail. And. I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I asked Jeanette some questions and things were explained and. As a town, it's our responsibility to have looked at this for the meeting, so that we can sign it and approve it. That's our responsibility.
We'll get it.
I know, but we need, it was due. In April, we should have be ready to act on it tonight.
I did send it almost two weeks ago.
And say, she said specifically we needed to be able to. Act on that. So Tom, can you?
No, I'm not doing that. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Here's the draft audit. That was sent out as well?
Yes.
No, I didn't have a chance to, I had too much going. That one there, I did, I didn't put this.
And.
And I know we got it, I have, I'm gonna look at it more.
You haven't looked at it yet either?
Well, I looked at it.
Do you have any comments on it? Joe Beth, do you have any comments on it?
Question, I think I know the answer already. Um, a couple of small things on. Page seven.
Yep.
Where we had, and this is for twenty twenty-four, um. How the expendable trust funds were more than final budget expenditures by. Seventy-one thousand nine hundred twenty for the year. General fund action expenditures were less than voted appropriations. Due to several factors, including decreases in highway maintenance costs. But I thought overall our appropriation, our expenditures were higher. Because it went into the category for the road repair.
They are, and that's what he's saying.
Okay, because of the town's expendable trust.
Final budgeted expenditures were over by seventy-one nine twenty. But then he's saying voted appropriations. Were less than what were in those budgeted amounts because, because. Work that would have happened in the regular highway stuff didn't happen. It happened over in the emergency side.
And I guess why I wondered whether that should be explained. Or.
Well, and.
Yeah.
I mean, he doesn't give a, doesn't give a specific explanation. He just says. Uh, due to several factors.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that was just a question I had, and it was another really minor one. Um. On page ten. Under liabilities, intergovernmental payable. There's a hundred dollars under conservation commission. Is that just a placeholder?
Yes.
Okay. I think those were the only questions I had.
That may have been the um. The bookkeeper. When something would be done with the conservation commission, she would then, she then would do a journal entry. From. The general fund to the conservation commission. And then I said, why are you doing that? She said, well, you have to fund it some way. And I said, no, the conservation commission is its own bank account. I said, it's even set up that way in the system. You have bank account one, which is general funds and bank account two, which is the conservation commission. I said, the expenses that happen. That I code to conservation commission out of general funds are out of the general budget.
Okay.
There are other expenditures that come out of the conservation commission that have nothing to do with the general budget.
Right.
She didn't understand that.
Okay.
So that may be what that is.
Okay, is that the old bookkeeper?
Uh, not the old bookkeeper, the book, the new bookkeeper, but old employee. She doesn't do our books anymore. She left and we have someone else.
Okay. So it's okay to leave that there, I guess was my question.
I would think so.
Okay.
I can ask Steve about it.
Okay.
See what he says, but I would think so.
Okay. And when does Steve need an answer if we're okay with the draft?
It's just possible.
Okay, I know we have to upload it. The, we've got a report to DRA, but before we set tax rates.
I, yeah, yeah, I have some time.
Okay.
So we, Steve is asking us to sign the representation letter. Which we always do when we get, receive the draft audit. So. There's a space for signature for the governing board and then space for the administrator. So there's the letter.
Okay.
So Tom, do you want to? Leave your option open for comments on the audit or?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it open for the moment.
And.
And this is, this paper's coming across, that's just a. Um.
It's a basic representation. I mean, it's pretty detailed, but it's what we're.
Did you send that with the uh, with the audit that you sent to us already?
Probably, because I think I just forwarded the email.
So we.
You don't need to sign it.
No, but we, did we get that though?
I think so. I think I sent it with the audit.
Look at it.
I'm not sure, because I don't remember seeing it.
Okay.
I think there was just one attachment. I don't think it was with the audit report.
Okay, maybe not.
So maybe we can look at it.
It was.
And, and we'll talk about it next meeting.
That's nice.
Okay. Have any other?
Documents? The agreement for the solar system.
That solar system, Jeanette, uh, you said that they uh, gave you a letter of uh, that they're gonna take care of it.
No, it wasn't an email. I forwarded that to you after our last meeting.
Bring it up.
Oh.
I was like, that is a map. That's all I came.
There wasn't, and there wasn't a letter attached to it. It was in the body of the email, the financial part. It was in the actual body of the email.
No, I was like, that is a map, that's all I got. I had nothing else.
It was there, I know I got it.
I said, I opened up solar. I forget the name of it now, but. And.
You opened up the attachment?
Yeah, I opened the attachment and I got a map of the New Hampshire.
Right, so it was. Go ahead.
Sorry. It wasn't the attachment, it was the email. You had to scroll down in the email.
I didn't, I, let me read, look at it.
It's the, I forwarded the email from the state. So you had to scroll down under what I typed in there. And it's in the body of the email from the state representative.
Alright.
Where it said that.
I'll look at it again, thank you.
And I. Went to the Zoom meeting for the solar power with the state representatives last week. And that came up and they confirmed that they have the money in a bank account waiting for us to draw away. And they went over the details.
Yeah, I think she was just, she just sent a map showing the different towns that.
Yeah.
Received the grant, received grant funds.
And we've already. Voted to move forward with this, so I don't know if we need a motion to sign the contract.
Uh, right, it was voted on at town meeting.
Right.
The only stipulation was that the funding was in place.
I uh. Forget who I was talking to, and I don't know a lot about this stuff, but I'm gonna throw this out there. That uh, those, the building that is gonna be put on. Is uh, buildings that are strapped and got metal, metal roof on it. That is, has already been looked at and the engineer, engineer, the engineer said it was okay.
The engineer looked and said it was okay, yes.
But I, I uh. I should have wrote it down. Somebody, there was talking about that you shouldn't go over. Something of, just, just metal with uh, with no base underneath. I don't know if it's something you wanna look into, because I mean.
Well, that's funny, because I'm getting solar panels on my house and I'm having a metal roof put underneath.
You're, you're, you're just a residential, you're not gonna commercial. There's a white field, they, if I recall, I mean, they put a whole uh. Uh. I don't know if it's insulation, what the heck it was, but they did, they did uh. Not state of the art, when they did theirs.
They got a whole new roof.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Cause it had to be replaced.
Right, but I just don't, I just don't know, I don't know. I don't know the news and alls about this stuff, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, we had. Them look at the roof. And say that it was acceptable before, and then we had a structural analysis of the roof done.
Right.
So I, I think, I think we're all set. So. Do we need a motion for this? I, I don't think we do, right?
It was approved at town meeting.
Town meeting.
That's what I was gonna say, it was already approved.
Already approved, so I'll sign it on behalf of the board.
Meeting minutes. Public hearing, meeting minutes.
I really love that though.
So we have the public hearing meeting minutes from April twenty-eighth. I make a motion that we approve them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can still approve them even though you weren't here. Meeting minutes from the regular select board meeting from April twenty.
I make a motion, we approve the committee minutes from April twenty eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all I have for signature. Okay.
Okay, for all business, um, we have the updated and happy invoices. And there were quite a few that were yours, so are they?
It looks alright.
It's okay?
Yeah.
You agree with them?
Okay.
Um, but the only problem was, I think we want to. The one from the seventh. Does not seem to be ours. Receive and review additional comments and information from the department, review and prepare analysis of issues related to. Department power and Wilton issues, exchange email with town council.
That's ours.
I don't think that's ours. Okay, but the other.
Please.
Yep.
I missed it till, I missed it till. And that's not true.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's lobby bookkeeping. That's not the first time it's happened. Okay, so minus that issue, we'll let Jeanette work with their office on that and, and we can pay.
That's my copy.
Okay. So you know the item that, we're talking, you want my copy?
No, I know the item. You don't have a. Um.
You have a marker?
No. The log?
Yeah, oh, I do.
Okay, can you bring me a copy of that so I can put it with the invoice?
I mean, we had to be here at five, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. So I'm paying that invoice, that's the February invoice.
So you, so you'll give her a log?
Yeah.
And that way she'll have the documentation.
It's March. And I emailed you guys today the April invoice.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, um, Bean property update. We had the second public hearing. After that, when we went into.
That's all I'm trying to do today.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it. I mean, there. So again, I mean, I think she's got your log, but she can recognize, reconcile it. I'll get it. Um. So we had the second public hearing. When we went back into public session, um. The board approved selling the half acre to Carol and Pamela Bean. And so the next steps are. When we get the Mylar from Carol, we'll have Carl sign it, Jeanette will record the transaction in the county courthouse. Then we can finalize acquit claim deed and finalize the sale. And the other thing is pulling out the um, cost.
Yep.
For posting public notices and the legal expenses related to it. Okay. Um, Eric and Tom, do you have more on the landfill post closure report?
No, until one week with them.
Okay.
They come in this month, so.
Yeah, I thought, I didn't know when in this month, okay.
They said after the first mowing, and they'll be in touch with us. When they come up, this could be toward the end of May.
Okay. We talked about the twenty twenty-four audit. Okay. Committee updates, conservation commission?
I don't know nothing today.
Okay, uh, planning board. Um. We did have a. Minor law line adjustment proposed.
Illuminary, this is a luminary review.
Yep. Where's my? Right, we're Mark and Martha Haskins. And I think we were scheduling the public hearing on June fourth for that. What came up. Earlier is that um. We need to get the information to do that so she can post it.
I don't have any information on it.
Yeah.
And she could post that and also the lot line merger for the beans.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, Mark Vanderheiden was gonna. Try and get all the information.
Tried all the butters and everything.
For the butters list and.
Well, we have until Thursday. To get the ad into the paper.
Yeah.
For the June fourth. Planning board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So. We'll wait and see what happens, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, I'll try to, I'll reach out to Carl and. The planning board and just as a reminder that if we need to, if not, then it'll just have to get.
It'll have to be.
Cuz he was gonna. Do that, and I think we did it. If I recall correctly, pending. All that information from him.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the other thing on June fourth could be, we received the merger requests from. Carol Bean. Well, we may be jumping the gun because we won't finalize the sale by the fourth.
Maybe, but maybe not.
There could be a public hearing. And the approval by the planning board would be pending completion of the sale.
Right.
So that we can keep it moving and doesn't wait another month.
Okay.
The host community agreement committee meets next week.
Next Monday.
Till there's no update. I know that um. You did send out some other sample agreements.
Sample agreements, um, some state guidelines, even though they're not New Hampshire's. Recommendations from states that I was able to find.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, opposed agenda from my state as well.
Yeah. And previously, I'd sent out. The agreements from Coventry and from. Um, Bethlehem, N C E S. For the board to review, the, the committee to review.
You got the phone number I sent you, alright?
I did. I, I did not call. I, I wanted to discuss that Monday night to see if that's something that the committee wants, and then maybe we just. All get on the call. So it's not, I, I just think it's probably more appropriate than me as an individual. Reach out unless the committee says like, hey, Paul, you reach out. That, that's all I was thinking with that. But I've got it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's a discussion point for Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're actually proceeding on the solar grants. We're actually proceeding with getting the solar panels. Um. I don't have an update from the hazard mitigation. One, because the last meeting, I think we talked about. Ended up being canceled. And there's a meeting coming up, which I don't think I'm going to make. But you'll be there and, and Ron and.
The twenty first?
Yeah. It's a Wednesday, right?
Yes.
So. I think information's on the website if you wanted to jump in and participate in that.
The, they, uh, the uh.
Hazard mitigation.
Everything is the number, uh. The invites on the. Website, right?
Because I don't get the Zoom information from her until a day or two before.
Okay.
So let Jeanette know if you can participate.
Yeah.
I think they're usually at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Two to four. Two to four.
The twenty first?
Yes, twenty first.
Yep. Okay, um. FEMA, do we have an update on?
Boy, do we.
Oh, boy.
So. Uh, and the phone call that I had with FEMA last week. There's a new mitigation person who had questions about some of the issues on Blakeslee. Or so, not issues on Blakeslee, but some of the things on Blakeslee. So we're working through those items. Um. They also came up with some questions on Smith Road as far as items that were originally in place. To be replaced in kind or whether they were mitigation items. The one woman stated that they had a bunch of questions, at which point I said. You guys have had these plans for almost eight weeks. This is the first time that you've said you had questions. In addition to that, we've discussed Smith Road. And the project manager was going to tell me if there were any questions or any. Issues that we needed to be concerned about before executing a contract, of which she had none. So now all of a sudden, you guys have questions. So, um. The woman said that they would, we would take the meeting offline. That meeting has not happened yet. It's supposed to be scheduled for this Thursday, when her supervisor is back. In addition to that, D E S. Would not issue an emergency permit. So we are having to. Apply for a wetlands permit. Um. So that's being done right now. I have sent a letter to John. For the conservation commission to waive their rights to a forty-five day review. Of the project. So that, uh, one of the reviewers at D E S. Can push the, the review through and issue the permit in a couple of weeks. But the conservation commission doesn't meet again until a week from tomorrow. So we won't get that letter until then. Um. I spoke with Nancy Smith today regarding an easement. Um, agreement. That the town needs in order to be able to adequately maintain. The roadway. So included in the proposal for the, the roadwork is. The amount that we would pay the Smiths in order to get that permanent easement. It's a thousand dollars. So once. They sign the agreement and we have it recorded at the Coas County Registry. I'll need to cut a check for the Smiths for a thousand dollars for that.
Was that in the contract proposal or this is a new expense?
Hmm, this was in the pricing that was done by the engineer for Smith Road. So it was included in the estimate.
Okay.
Yep. Um. So there was a, there's a dredge and fill permit application that's been submitted. Um. Again, hopefully, the um. The person at D E S who chimed in late in the emails going back and forth. Will be able to get it put on the top of the stack so that it's reviewed in a couple of weeks. Um. Yeah. Really not happy about it. Uh, so we'll find out. I guess we'll find out later this week. Wh- wh- what? The questions are regarding Smith Road. Um, D E S basically came back and said. You should have applied for an emergency permit last summer. And put rebuilt the road in kind and then. Gone back and submitted drawings for you to rebuild the road with mitigation a second time. That's essentially what they said. So.
That makes no sense.
Right? I, yes, um. So, yeah. So that's Smith Road. Otherwise, um. Harriman and union and Briggs should be coming back to us for final review so that it can go to. Um. Obligation and accounting to be funded. And there's a few questions I got on Blakeslee regarding some culverts that were done. Um, they're asking if this is, if the work that was done is permanent or temporary. So I have to get with Adam on those couple of issues and then. Blakeslee should be done. And should move forward.
Long process.
Yeah.
Re-involve process.
Right. Um, no, Adam and I are going, going to go over the Blakeslee Road sites that FEMA has. I think there's thirteen of them specifically. And he's going to map out where they're going to start working. Um, so that we can start ordering the material. For that and then kind of give me an idea of a timeline as far as where they're gonna start and where they're gonna end up. So that we can get that done.
Okay.
I guess the one good thing is we found out from under Canvas last week is that they are not planning on doing a soft opening this year. They are going to be working at the site to get things done, but they won't be doing a soft opening. They're just gonna go with their regular grand opening next spring. May-ish. So that's kind of good cuz that gives us more time to get Blakeslee done. Without having to deal with. Tourists.
Okay.
So that's FEMA in a nutshell.
Okay. And. Smith Road. You kind of covered that.
I kind of covered that, yeah. Nancy was very. Unhappy when I told her what was going on, but I, I told her, we're moving forward. It's just slower than we anticipated.
And we could still, at this point, if there was a chance of buying the Chamberlain property, we could.
I did look at the contract that we signed with J A McDonald and it, we do have outs, so yes. Yep.
Okay. Alright, new business cemetery cleanup notice?
Yep. Go ahead.
I made sure I put that on the, I'm like, we cannot forget. We have to get that in there.
So. Would we need to approve it or usually?
Generally, they approve it, right?
Yeah.
You generally.
Cost of the. Ads, the.
Putting the ad in the paper.
Yeah, the paper, the people to clean up their stuff.
I make a motion that we. Put our annual cemetery cleanup notice in the local papers, uh. Salmon Press and Caldorian and put it on our website.
What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that puts us cleaning it up Memorial Day weekend. Is that? That, is that when we usually do it? We usually do it the weekend before, don't we?
I think by Memorial Day.
Okay.
Basically, I think that's what it's been. So Memorial Day is the Monday of that weekend.
Yes.
I mean, statutorily, are we required to give it a certain number, amount of notice?
I don't know.
I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Don't remember. Reading anything. So you're thinking if we put the notice. The notice will be published like the. Twenty first?
Yeah. It's a week.
Which is just a couple of days before. Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
I think it's just basically a.
It's a courtesy.
Courtesy so that people who might have. Had some artificial flowers or something like that and. They think that it still looks good that, you know.
Well, and I don't know. You would know before I would. I mean, I just help you guys that whether or not people actually go to the cemetery and do any cleanup. It seems like we do a fair share of it.
Yeah, um, some people do. Some people are pretty good about it, um, and some people are.
And you do it at the same time every year, so people should know anyway, but.
And you could put it on the website right away.
Yes. Yeah.
And maybe put a notice in the window or something.
And can we order the flags?
Yes, do you know how many?
Um, I think about the same number that we had last year, um. Was it? Around hundred and forty or so.
I'm not, I don't remember. I ordered them off of Amazon, so I'll just look at my past orders.
Yeah, yeah, they had, um. What was it? Six bundles, I think, of the. They were bundles of twenty-four.
Okay.
I think that's how much they had. They were.
Okay.
But yeah.
So order the same.
Size, the twelve by eighteen flags, um, thirty inch long sticks. With a little two inch gold tip.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I can do that. And hopefully, there's no shipping delays.
Yeah. Well, they're made in America.
We do get them made in America. Yes, we do.
So you don't have to worry about tariffs.
Right.
Okay. Alright, um. Miscellaneous updates. I know we had a notice from Amper Sand. Which is basically where they had to go out because they had. Um. Gone outside of their. River run, ru- run river, whatever low rate, I think. Um, and that was approved. It was back when they had. Ice jam and high water back in January, but it was approved. So we have that, that notice received. Do we have any other miscellaneous updates?
Uh, we do need to talk about. Putting something out. For doing street numbers. On posts again. I know Ron has talked about it a couple of times, um. I think we just need to put it out there.
And we can't include that.
I don't think so.
With the tax bills, right?
I don't think so. I'll, I will look at the statute and find out.
Seems like a few years ago it came with my tax bill. But I could be wrong.
I'll look.
Cuz if we could include it, that would be perfect and save nail.
I think it, I think it did cuz we came in and bought one and put, had to have one put up.
Yeah, I, I'll look and make sure that we can do it.
I think that's how I did to get mine. Yeah.
Cuz I know I got something. And I just don't remember. How it came.
Official business maybe cuz. I would.
Yeah.
We'll find out. The, um.
It's a part of how we're still doing.
Yeah.
Cuz. We know where to go.
Right.
And. Ron said he didn't mind.
So you'd actually volunteer to put them up?
Yes, we are. He volunteered to put the. The numbers on cuz it's pretty tricky. They would. Get them back on that. You won't do it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have quite a few people that want them cuz I heard.
Yep. Okay.
Um, the Dalton Neighbor's Garden out front is taking shape. Um, we have the pavers that are being ordered. So if anyone wanted to get a paver. Um, with a. I don't know. With a message or something on it. Then, uh, those order forms are on the table out in the hallway, but we're, we plan to order those. Um, towards the end of this month, probably another week or ten days. So. If anyone wanted to do that. Then those orders are due.
The garden looks nice.
We'll keep working on it. We have our gardening day this coming Sunday, so.
And. I'm backing up to the conservation commission. I know the original, um. Cleanup day was postponed cuz it was raining. How did the second one go?
It was raining. It was raining, but we still participated, um. How many mattresses did we pull out of the turnaround in the brook?
Eight.
Seven or eight?
Eight.
Um, yeah, we had one of the firefighters who brought his tractor with his forks because they were so waterlogged that we wouldn't be able to lift them.
For the turnaround, in which brook, the one down here?
At, at the turnaround. There's a small brook that runs to the very side of that.
Okay.
A ditch.
Small ditch, okay.
Um, so there was that and. Almost a full trailer of bags. There's still people who are coming in and asking for bags. Um. And I'm just letting them know that they have to take them to the transfer station themselves. There won't be any, any more pickup. Um, I did post something on the class and the vestibule about. The Earth Day, uh, pickup thing that, um, North Country. Ca- not North Country Council, North Country Chamber of Commerce is doing, um. They're doing a. Some type of. I don't know, raffle or something. You. Fill the bags and you take a picture and you upload it to their site and then you get entered into a prize, raffle for prizes or something. So I thought that was a good way to maybe entice people to go fill a. Trash bag with roadside trash. We've had a couple of people come in, but.
Okay.
Um.
Why would we use dog bags on one thirty-five? We didn't.
We didn't use dog.
This state.
They're donated.
Bags are blue. They've gone through this with, I don't know how many people.
Yep, they're the same.
They were, they bitched about Whitefield. We went just a little bit over the line and then picked up. Three bags and we, we heard nothing about it. Why don't we picking up dog bags? They're not, this state.
Yeah. There, we get.
Like ours.
We get bags donated to us free of cost from N R R A, keep, um, keep New Hampshire beautiful. Um, and those are the bags that are used for the roadside cleanup. State road or town road or private road. They're free bags. State road or town road or private road, they're free bags, we get them from N R R A. And that's what we use, they're not Dalton, official Dalton Town bags.
Yep.
Although we did, um, we did pick up, uh but we got an email from a resident today, I don't recognize the name, McQuire. Uh, just basically says, I don't know who else to thank, Mike, for picking up the disgusting chair and Whitefield garbage that was thrown over the side of the road, please tell him it's so, it's very much appreciated. So this was on, where is this, on Faraway? So you see, it's a White, it's Whitefield's trash bag with witch furniture and all types of stuff, I think. You actually had to use the excavator, didn't you?
Yeah.
To get it out from over the side of the road, cause it was so steep. And just loaded it in his trailer and took it with all the rest of the roadside trash. I mean, tires upon tires upon tires and furniture and you name it, it's disgusting.
Johns River Cemetery.
Yeah.
Yep.
In the bushes off the side of the cemetery.
Yeah, it's
I wish people would have more respect for our town, for their town, I mean, it's your town too, unless it's
For just.
Town.
Maybe it's not our residents, it's them in it.
I'm sure, yeah, but. Anyway.
Okay, any other updates? Updates, okay, do we have any public comments? Do we have any other business?
We received fourteen thousand two hundred nine dollars and eighty one cents for our highway block grant on April twenty ninth.
Fourteen thousand one?
Fourteen two oh nine eighty one.
And is that what we were expecting?
Yes. And then today in the mail, we received a check for almost twenty two hundred dollars, which is reimbursing the town of Dalton for diesel fuel tax. The taxes we pay on our fuel because we're using road fuel, not off-road fuel. After finding out the damage that that does to a, to a to our equipment and our trucks that have to use the diff systems. Um, so yeah, so we've been using regular diesel, but we have to pay the taxes on that from our vendor. Um, but we found out that we could apply, just do all the paperwork and apply to get the taxes refunded, so we got that check today, so twenty two hundred bucks, thank you.
Thank you for doing the paperwork.
You're welcome.
Play.
The last thing I have, I have two more quick things.
Okay.
The first thing is the wetland permit was approved for Forest Lake State Park for them to bring in sand. So that work, if it's not happening now, it will be happening. They were hoping to have it done before Memorial Day weekend. And that's the state doing that project, not not us, but they send us a copy of the permit.
And that's good, that'll be a good improvement to the park.
Yeah. And then we also received the uh, official twenty twenty four total equalized valuations for town property. And I emailed that to everyone.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone wants to see it again, but got that as well.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. It's almost nine o'clock.
I do, I do have three non-public uh, three non-public items. Legal, legal and maybe two, I have two, legal and legal.
Okay. We could have a personnel item, but I maybe we'll wait till the next meeting?
I don't know, that won't stay left now. Yeah, we'll wait.
Okay. And we do need to talk about our next meeting date.
Yes. So our next meeting is scheduled for
Thursday, May twenty ninth. Because Monday falls on Memorial Day.
Ah, that's right, I was thinking of the twenties, okay. I will have to, um call into the meeting.
I'm
Most likely.
Not going to be here. I have to go back to Chicago. So I didn't know if it was possible that we skip a meeting and meet, just meet on June ninth.
I don't have anything pressing right now.
I mean, the, you know, the couple things that are pressing, I think we're taking, we're addressing as they come up and if anything comes up, we can always do a Zoom meeting or something.
So we could always meet on the second of June.
I may not be back yet.
Okay.
I, I'm doing my best to make sure I'm back
Actually, I
twelve o'clock on the third.
And actually, I can't because I, I, I won't you realize I could be back up here, it would be like seven thirty, so no, I can't.
So can we skip that first, that last meeting in June and meet on the ninth, which would be our regularly scheduled meeting?
Finally.
Okay, now we need somebody to come in and sign payroll.
Right, I will be doing payroll on Tuesday afternoon, so I'll need someone to come sign the payroll checks.
On Tuesday, the twenty seventh?
Yes. Are one of you two available to do that?
Not this time, no.
Can you come after work, Eric?
I don't get out till four thirty now.
That's fine, I'm here till six o'clock on Tuesdays. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Days out?
Tuesday, the twenty seventh, the day after Memorial Day. So our next meeting won't be until June ninth.
Correct.
But you'll come sign checks on the twenty seventh, Eric.
And we're not having a meeting next, well, technically.
You're not.
We're not having a meeting, but it's posted as a select board being part of the H C A committee, right?
It's not posted as a select board meeting, it's posted as an H C A meeting in which the select board are members, so you will be in attendance.
Okay, as in our select board roles.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then I make a motion that we go into non-public session for two legal items?
Yes. Eight fifty nine.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you, everyone.
My, that one is topments for the Conservation Committee.
Um. Do they need to receive that? It's a right to know for the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or scan it and send it to them and just make sure, you know, kind of track it.
Okay.